Yeah, why, why is this necessary for having that in the corner? That department got twice as much computers as anybody on the whole page.
Which one of us?
Matt. Isn't that fair for them to have little computers?
They, uh, they have quite a few people that have had computers. And they also have, uh, three or four dozen reporters.
Clay, we also looking to take upon transferring stations, right?
Yes, the transfer station will wait there. Right, yeah, that will wait there. Transfer station repair, uh, the building, the transfer station will have to be done. Just, uh, could bond probably, another bond is probably not efficient at all. That's why I'm trying to free up some of that money too. Cause I know the transfer station will be repaired and they just don't want it to be repaired now.
We did, we did a hundred days, sixty seven, again, and now we're...
Uh, we, uh, they... We got that, yeah.
The one to get through this is all county computer that they...
Yes, sir. Unless, of course, you're getting any new employees, but this will, um, re- replace existing technology inside of the department.
What was the question? We heard, uh...
Switches last year.
No, well, the, uh, switches last time, people keep the switches up, have nothing to do with main town business.
Correct, that's right.
I just want to get on...
Well, yeah, yeah, the switch is basically what they do to keep us, but they communicate. The switches keep us between offices and construction.
You get it and have those, then, we, we would get a little hurt because no one will be able to get to the internet, uh, or get used to the service.
Yes, you'll have to load on that, it's where I got it.
Okay, well, okay, hey, G O Bond twenty, twenty-one, like, one million, two hundred thousand.
Yeah, but Sheriff, we, uh, we got it written down, uh, here too. We work with Sheriff's Department and you can see, uh, uh, he got a state contract rights from, to outbid some sheriff. Oh, it's that sheriff's. I would, I want to thank Sheriff, his staff coming here. He, he's done a decent job helping, trying to retrofit his, his vehicles and, uh, cars he's purchased and been in. He has been gracious enough to, uh, we can do the ten cars here, is that right? We have one ninety-seven, seven, seven, ninety-seven, I can, we can take that out of G O Bond. Yes, the two twenty-five, nine oh six is coming out of the money people receive from the state. So that's not going to come out of G O Bond. I know it's listed here on agenda as G O Bond, but actually the sheriff has been working with, uh, myself in, in finance retro. He's been having to take the two twenty-five out of the nice grant that he got from the state there. So the two twenty-five is not coming out of G O Bond. So technically, uh, all, all he's asking for is one ninety, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven, seven, ninety-seven.
And that'll outfit ten cars.
Correct.
Plus, um...
That's going to be for the ten cars, you're going to put them in there. There you go. Radio, cameras, blue lights, that's what office is.
Strapping, everything.
Home nine door, drive-in.
And the whole of it, they came to red that took off to get the equipment.
Right.
So they went and done the equipment there so they can store it. Put the car together, what we can get back with this.
All of those cameras will be on, you know, front.
No, the camera will be inside, inside the vehicle. And it, it will have inside and outside view. So anything going on outside or inside. And that'll help us with the rent, truth will be there. What that I have is there.
And I think just the sheriffs will put these on patrol vehicles first. Basically, all this information going patrol vehicles first. So that's, that's, I think that's a good approach. I think he's taking the right approach by going that way first, going that way. Patrol vehicles will be outbid first. And the other stuff, like I said, two twenty-five is coming out of the money he's received from the state. So that's not, that definitely has to be approved by council, uh, this article from the state. Uh, fire truck match with the, uh, you, I'm like, I would make that motion to G O Bond as a key to the grant. Basically, fifty thousand dollar match, I want to be good, we got, we got five hundred thousand over there. And then, uh, uh, the phones, uh, we could take out the, we could, could take out the American League money because this is going here to be, to, basically, the phones. Do you want to explain that a little bit?
Yes, currently, uh, the, uh, phones that we have, like that one right there on the desk over there. Those phones are around eight years old now. Uh, I was with Clay when we first implemented this voiceover IP system. Uh, currently, these phones are obsolete, cannot be repaired, you can't buy parts for them. I've already had to start implementing with people that have had phones over their test that die, um, to replace those. You know, more than the time I've already done about eight phones so far. What this will do will take care of replacing the remainder of the phones before the end of the year because as AT&amp;T says, they could possibly have an upgrade to our internal system that can call our system, not our, our phone system. So we need to make sure that, uh, the citizens, of course, can call in and we can call out and be able to communicate. Um, it's, you know, very important about communications. I guess that these phones are very old and that set of phones should last us at least another seven or eight years again. But we just, we have a lot of old technology and now we need the old ones. And, uh, got to expedite trying to replace things something from the end of the year.
It poses me why we wouldn't, everything is dead when we start doing something. Well, I'm saying everything is, uh, previously we didn't do what's supposed to do and everything is going down to this.
Well, I would say this in the past, but it's just, I think, wasn't there to be able to be allowed to happen. And so you just have to take and change your battles as to what you can and can't get.
Everything in the world is dead right now and can't be fixed.
Going forward, we have a system in place to make sure we don't come back to...
Oh, yeah, and that's AT&amp;T told me, first two and a half years ago, about the idea that we could not get that type of phone and get replacement parts for it. That's where I've been going through people that have had phones, replacing with the bug type phone that can be implemented on our system.
No, we're not blaming you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, and, and of course, uh, AT&amp;T does work with me to notify me that, you know, what that is getting old and we need to try and replace it.
Two and a half years.
I'm sorry.
Two and a half years, gave you that.
Yes, sir.
Should've been two years ago then.
Council, we have spent massive amounts on tech knowledge. We upgraded everything in this basement. We had to go in fiber and all these things. We, down the line, we, I know the needs keep changing, but the old councils that used to be here have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars while he was here and while he's here, upgrade everything. And, you know, the money is, we know in our county is not hanging like grapes that we can pluck. And we've had other needs all through the campaign. That's the whole problem. We always have more needs than you have for money.
And that's where he's watching.
And this technology has really gotten out of hand. Flood has passed up, you know, sent down all these mandates that we had to do with the jail and all this stuff. Mr. Overdose is what I'm talking about, going into detail. And this, I don't know what we, the council, well, our house, it was, it was now, at once upon a time. But McCray, he can tell you how many, what, millions that we spend out there. And we get a little bit from the phone bill, but it's just been an afterthought thing that it keeps. Technology changes and we have to, we have to pay.
About like five of those, they can slow them sucker down, you gotta buy them every two years.
Like our labor though, Craig.
Yeah, well, it does go off.
I, yeah, I, I would make the motion is that we would, uh, do the sheriff's cars, uh, equip the sheriff's cars at one ninety-seven, seven, seven, and seven. And if we do fire truck match contingent upon us giving the grant and the phone, phones and tablets for thirty-three thousand. That's the motion to make, that's my good motion.
We have a motion, it's too long. Uh, sheriff car equipment, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars, or sheriff car equipment, two hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and seven thousand.
Twenty-five, twenty-five ninety equipment, that's right, that's right.
Sheriff car equipment, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars, and ninety-seven fifteen, that was a lot. The sheriff car equipment, two hundred twenty-five thousand.
Got that in the park.
He's getting that up.
How about the fire truck match?
Yeah, the fire truck, we made the motion that, uh, it continues upon us actually receiving the grant. Still approve, still approve what you... Yes, sir, Mr. Sheriff, I make that motion that we get, uh, five hundred thousand dollar grant contingent upon us. Just get five hundred thousand dollar grant. That's, that's right, that's correct.
Is that the D's button?
Say something.
On the favorite right hand. Phone cameras, thirty-three thousand. And what do you tell you? You bid, number sixteen, Steve Johnson, downtown, about...
Sheriff, I got Steve Johnson here, I think he might recognize someone else. Brief up that.
Uh, thank Clay, thank, uh, Council for this time. I'm asking you all, uh, give us this time to Stephanie Mitchell. Uh, we're coming with Dylan Community Alliance. I know a lot of y'all have heard of us, I know you have. We're just trying to, when I say make noise, we're not making noise, we're trying to get things done. Um, and right now, our big focus is downtown. Me personally, I think this is our last best chance to make downtown good. We can't do it in the next two or three years, we might be lost downtown. Um, that's just my personal opinion. And I own four properties downtown. And I hate to say, see it go that way because I do, um, but, uh, downtown benefits everybody, not just the city, county. It benefits people right now, now and then. But I'm going to introduce Stephanie Mitchell. Stephanie, if you want to kind of go over, uh, I guess some more of the details, but, uh, I just want to thank y'all for our time and thank you for any consideration. We come in asking for money, I know that. So, so please consider it. This is Stephanie Mitchell. We also have, uh, Sarah Bright Rogers, uh, who's with us today too, so, uh, I'm sorry.
And I don't want y'all to think everything I have in my hands we don't talk about, but I like it, y'all, when I'm asked for, uh, a piece of paperwork or whatever, I like to know that I have it with me. Um, I am Stephanie Mitchell and I am one of the founding members of the Dylan Community Alliance, which is our downtown merchant owners association. But it's not just limited to the merchants because if someone that lives outside of the city and didn't have a business wanted to support the city and help it grow, then we wanted them to be members as well. We didn't want to exclude anybody. Before I go any further, I want to say, one, thank y'all for letting me speak, but y'all make a lot, a lot of tough decisions up here that I, more power to you. I mean, y'all sit in a hard position. I watch every one of these council meetings and there is, it is very different for me being here today than watching this council meeting on the video. Um, hats off to you. Y'all got some hard decisions to make and as y'all already said, the money just does not stretch, so hats off to you. But anyway, yeah, we're going to be asking for money. Y'all got a packet in there, didn't you, that had a couple, um, uh, pieces of paper in it? You can look through it, I did. If you want to see the full field, you can go back and watch the city council meeting from this one, it's on there. But I don't do a mini field for y'all. Um, the first paper that you got was the cost of, of calculating the cost of an empty building. All right, you know, we have, you may or may not know, anybody don't know how many buildings we have in our historic area downtown? Sixty, sixty-some, and a right there. How many of those are vacant? Who knows? Nineteen?
Gee. Over thirty.
Over thirty, thirty. All right, roughly, just, I mean, I'll run through the math, we won't be soon, but I'm going to do this. Roughly, um, we are losing seventy-five thousand dollars in economic impact per building, per year. Every year, the total number of buildings, that's over two million dollars of economic impact we lose in a year. That's a lot of money. I mean, you know, y'all were talking about, that's how many? That's eight ambulance executives. So, uh, that's a lot of money. Um, but I want to review the, um, we got a little thing that has all the different formulas on here, how I arrived at that. And that is figured by, okay, the residential rent, I just did a estimate, was about eight hundred dollars a month for a family of four, which turns into that family of four, average income is thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. Okay, for a family of four who makes that much money, typically, according to the numbers that you have in formulas in here, typically that family can spend about twelve hundred dollars a year in food away from home. Well, that's about a hundred dollars a month. If you've seen any of the tax accommodations, two percent hot meals money, you know we did. It's not, it, yes, it comes from the interstate, but it also comes from the people around here because a lot of people eat out. Um, so that's that bit of information. So then, if we look at our, um, commercial property rent downtown, I don't know what rents are, but just again, estimating an eight hundred dollar rent on a building downtown. At doing, at five percent, that person, in order to be able to pay that eight hundred dollars in rent a year, they need to bring in at least a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in revenue a year. So if you take that hundred and twenty thousand dollars in revenue, that we're going to put businesses in each one of these empty buildings, you add the property taxes, which are roughly, and I just estimated, plus I know what mine are, a thousand dollars. If you do advertising, because every successful business must advertise, that's twelve thousand dollars. That only equates to a thousand dollars a month and that is minimal for a business for advertising. The labor, that's thirty-six thousand dollars, that's just one employee. Um, and the utilities, seven thousand, five hundred dollars a year. That's where I came up with that seventy, roughly seventy-four, it's seventy-four, three, seventy-four thousand, three hundred dollars estimated annual loss. But that is not even including if those, if that employee or if they have multiple employees lives or chooses to spend the money that they make back in this town. That's additional income. So we're, we're essentially having an economic impact loss. Now, I know that Clay, um, knows the value, uh, and I hope y'all do, of a good-looking Main Street. Because when businesses are recruited here, even if it's just a manufacturing business or a restaurant, they like to go and see what's downtown. What does our downtown look like and look wrong? Scary. Yes, so we are working, um, the, the city and, and I have already asked for money from the city. So I, I went there first, but I'm coming to y'all because we are the county seat and I, I, I hope Clay will speak to, what does a Main Street mean to a new employer here? So the, the, um, businesses that you're bringing in now for the, um, manufacturing and things, have you gotten any feedback about the downtown from them?
They, they, nowadays, they go with the system backing up where they're going to. A lot of times they, they already ride through downtowns and neighborhoods that ride through everything before you get here.
All right, so we're just speculating then, because we don't know what the future's going to bring. But I do feel like Dylan is in a good place. People, we got the inland port here, we got things going for us. And a lot of people's going to say, well, that inland port's not going to make my Main Street look good. That may be true, but that, that is a reason for multiple cars and traffic to come here. Because if they work there, not just the inland port, but you have seen how many businesses the inland port has brought here. People work at all of those businesses. People need somewhere to live, that's another discussion, at all of those businesses. But if they had a nice place to eat and do business on Main Street, whether they come into work or going home from work, it's app that they will stop. Or they will say, oh, family, I saw this cute little restaurant on Main Street. We're going to go back there when I get off work and we're going to have supper. So the, the importance of a Main Street looking good is just, yes, you can put a dollar amount on it, I'm sure, but there's so much more than that. It makes the people of the town feel that good about themselves. I don't feel good driving down Main Street because these parts of it are scary. Um, we are working to, um, work with the business owners of the thirty empty buildings, they'll be the building owners. What we have proposed, you have in your packet, um, is, the city did what was called upbeat grants in the past and I'm just going to say the truth. The truth is, the contract for handing out the money was not written well with repercussions. For instance, you, you got your fifteen thousand dollar reimbursement, but that didn't necessarily mean that finished that building and it was able for anybody to move in and that kind of stuff. So we want to take a different approach. As Glenn says, it doesn't matter what you call it, but it matters to me. I want to call this a stabilization grant because our city is crumbling and if we don't take care of it, right now, we're, we're never going to get it back. Steve said in three years, you know, we'll be in a good place. Look, hopefully, five years, if we do something, we'll definitely be in a good place. But we're asking for a hundred thousand dollars to invest in our downtown. Now, um, that's, that can be a lot of different things. Because even the value of a flower arrangement or the flower pots on the poles bring people in. There are statistics that show that when the place looks pretty, people stop and shop. So part of the money could be used for that type of public, you know, beautification. But what we want to do is we want to see how business owners, building owners, that want to upgrade their property and are willing to make an investment. Now, we feel like they need to make a partial investment if we invest in them. And then I, I write a contract, terrible, my friend will say, because I expect a lot in return for what I give out. So I won't, if, if this is a fifty-fifty match, so what we'd like to do is like thirty thousand dollars per building owner that wants to rehab their building. You have a little group, group, I think, in your packet as to how the people will be chosen, the customers will be chosen. Um, but if they spend sixty, then they get a thirty thousand dollar reimbursement. But with that, we want them to have a business in that building for the next twelve months consecutively. I don't think that's a lot to ask for two reasons. One, the way our buildings look, rehabbing is going to take an easy six months to a year to get them to where somebody can go in them. And during that time, we can be working with that building owner on a business plan to get somebody into that building. So, um, and if the contract, the way I have it done, because I'm not saying it's the final, because y'all have the final say, I want to work with you and the city as well, so we can all come to agreement. But again, I want that twelve months of continuous business in there so we get the return on the thirty thousand dollars, not just the beautification, but the financial real dollars coming in. And then I won't, if that person in that business says, oh, I'm just going to fix up my business, I'm going to have somebody in here for three months and then I'm not going to worry about the rest of the contract, then I want that person to have to repay that thirty thousand dollars beginning immediately. Because I feel like that's theft. I mean, that's unfair if you take the thirty thousand dollars knowing that you had these requirements and then you didn't go to it. I always know things are going to happen and that is one reason you may have the rights of if, ands, and whats in the contract. But what, what I want is a, is a penalty for not doing, not following through. So having said that, let's see. Um, we know that the county is getting what, about five point nine million dollars in ARP funds, is that right, Clay? And the city's getting three point one million in ARP funding. So, um, I feel like if we get two hundred thousand dollars, that'll allow us, a hundred from y'all, a hundred from the city, that will allow us to rehab, um, six to seven buildings. That will make a big dent in the way our downtown moves. I'm not going to say I might not have to come back in the following years and ask for some more, but I hope that it is less because I hope by that time that everybody else has been spurred along. They're like, oh, Johnny over here, he's doing a great job on his business and he's going to be getting eight hundred dollars a month income from his ground. Let me see if I can put a little bit of money into my building and fix it up and get me a eight hundred dollar real check. So I hope that the ball gets rolling and we may not have to ask for any more. But Dylan has not been rolling in a long time and we need some help to move it forward. Um, did y'all get a copy of, of our financials? I don't know if you did or not, did you get that? Okay, I'd be glad to pass that around. Um, I don't know how long I have talked, but I'm also... Oh, I'm also, oh, I can good. Me and Steve can talk.
Everybody got a copy of...
You got a copy of the one with the street on it? I'll talk about that as I pass.
Yeah, now I got a quick question. Who will be responsible for the oversight and reporting back to the county with the progress, you know, staying updated with progress?
That would be us, Dylan Community Alliance. We'll keep all the records in there and we work, we are working, we just got a new downtown coordinator hired. And we're working with her as well to work down the Main Street. But that will be, um, once we do this contract, of course, we, it would be really specific, you know? We want to check in, I'm writing a program, well, I already wrote the program, and requested grant for a program that's called Set Up For Success. Meaning, you want to start a business on Main Street, but you're not exactly sure what you need. Do you need a point-of-sale system? Do you know who your customer is? How much money do you need to bring in? How do you pay your taxes? Those are things that the Dylan Community Alliance will work with the business owner to learn and make sure they are following through with all of that. Y'all are welcome to view our financials at any time. If you want to set like, we check in quarterly, or if you want to come by our office and check in monthly, or have me here monthly, I don't have problems with that.
So Stephanie, let me tell you this, um, as you and Steve both know, I've had a vested interest in seeing, um, our downtown flourish as well. And I've been on the draft, campaigning, mural projects and things of that nature. But I will say this as well, um, I've been in a bunch of those buildings downtown. And first things first, I think that it is unfair for us to even talk about giving money to revitalization of downtown and the city had to put anything in the place and throw more drinks. The last time we had hurricanes, every building down there flooded. If I was a property owner, I'm not putting a hundred thousand dollars into a building for the flood in the next month. So that's first things first. Next thing is, almost all these buildings we talk about need a roof on. Thirty thousand dollars doesn't start to get a roof on. There's bat infestations downtown on Main Street. So there's a lot of other things that I think we need to look at before we talk, start talking about, um, spending money, uh, to, to cosmetically fix a building. We have infestations of bats, we have flooding downtown Main Street, all the Dylan flood. I mean, even from a simple rain like today. And a roof's going to cost you thirty thousand dollars. I don't know how much you know about constructing... I don't know how much you know about construction, but right now, OSB boards through the roof. It used to cost about seven dollars, it was about fifty-some dollars a sheet. Might be going down now to about twenty-five or something like that. So, this, this is a horrible time to be talking about asking business owners to, to go ahead and spend money, thirty thousand dollars is gonna drop in a bucket for a project that's gonna cost you two hundred thousand dollars. And eight hundred dollars for rent ain't no money if I just spent three or four hundred thousand dollars in the building. I was gonna get fifteen, two thousand.
Okay, three questions. One, the, to the stormwater study, that has not been completed yet. Very soon, it should be completed, and then, I, our committee, DCA, will be working with the master plan and with the downtown planner to determine, you know, what's going on. And I hope that the city, I don't have any control, but I hope the city would look at the, um, the worst spots first. But when I discussed this with Glenn, the administrator, he has told me that truly, the way stormwater flows, it's not just where it piles up. You have to go all the way to the end, to the outlet, to make it decrease in time. So, I do know that some of that is in the works. Alright, the second thing, about thirty thou, people invest in thirty thousand dollars and they need roofs. Yes, that's what we wanna do with this money. We don't want it just to be on the outside of the building. We want their roofs, we want them, if their building is not stable, we want them to stabilize their building. If they have bad problems, we want them to use that money to help. But that's a match, because it's not fair just to give owner A thirty thousand dollars and say, "See what you can do with it," because they don't have any skin in the game.
No, I agree with what you're saying, but what I'm telling you is, the project and what you're submitting to us is gonna cost millions.
Yes, well, I'll, I'll take a million if you want to.
What you're talking about is, is two hundred thousand dollars, that's-
That's just a start, though.
A better term.
You have to start somewhere, because if we don't start, this stays for five, four years.
We need to make that a grant right, I think, because-
I am a grant buyer, and I have written several.
Two hundred thousand dollars is gonna put a roof on a building, and then that man's not gonna have money to go in there and research and reconstruct the inside. And so, by the time he gets that money to the outside, the roof will be missing.
The problem with grants are, though, they don't go into private businesses unless somebody, that private business writes a specific grant for their business model. Because right now, there's a lot of money out there that, you know, if you own a barber shop and you were shut down, then there are grants that you can apply for. But, that individual has to do that. Nobody can do that for them.
So, one, one thing that we do know is that we have Dillon County Long Term Recovery now. We have their chairman, their director, has been nominated from the state to be chairperson of stormwater drainage. They have five million dollars right now that they can invest in the stormwater drainage. I think the first step needs to be donating money there and get them invested in to help us with stormwater drainage before we can start talking about, thinking, I, I mean, I have plans to have buildings, they had to go in and cut up about ten or twelve inches of their walls where they had water damage and fall down in, in the shit road.
Have you walked down Main Street?
Absolutely.
Tell me what you smell.
Those bats.
Yes, and have you looked in buildings?
Yes.
What do they look like?
They look like crap.
So, you want them to remain, like, three more years until the stormwater? Okay, the road's gonna get paved in twenty twenty-two, and at that time is when they're going to fix the stormwater.
Actually, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, let's not waste money. Because we give a hundred thousand dollars-
I don't even invest in our downtown. It's a waste of money.
That's a waste. You gotta look at the big picture.
I will say this, if there's ten or twelve inches of water up on the wall, that's probably during floods or, or, uh-
Matthew.
Matthew, and, and guess what? It flooded everywhere.
Yes.
And then, when you get twenty-five inches of rain in a day, or in a few hours, it's gonna flood.
My field is active and flooded.
We have, we have water issues, stormwater issues. Whenever it rains three or four hours in, or three or four inches an hour, it's gonna flood for a little while, you know? I mean, that just happens every-
Right. We, our water table is very high here.
Whenever it rains twenty-some inches, I mean, it's gonna flood.
Is that the reason that Dillon? Right. Do we wanna just continue with our Main Street looking like this?
No, we don't, but I just think we need to make wise decisions to deal with the main. Thirty thousand dollars, the city may give a facade rent of three thousand dollars. I mean, you can't buy a facade.
I can, we can't give them away, that's right. That's why I wanted to increase this.
Thirty thousand dollars may be the same thing.
Our people need roofs and inside rehab work. That's why I wanted this money. But, we can't take this from the hot bills tax money, because that is only for complete public use. That's why they can use that for the outside of the building. This money has to come from other funding to go into the private business. And, one of the rules on the ARP funding is that this money can be funded down to nonprofits, to help personal, uh, business owners that have suffered from COVID, or have lost their wages, or all that kind of stuff.
I get that, but you're also saying that the business owner has to match with the thirty thousand. Obviously, if I own a business and I have thirty thousand, I'm not gonna let my building go down. So, if they got matched thirty thousand, they don't have thirty thousand off match, you still in the same spot.
Okay, so what's your solution then?
I don't necessarily have one, but I know that this is not it.
Okay, well, I mean, we can't continue to not have a solution and have a lot of opinions, or we're not gonna get anywhere.
We've been trying this for, how long, you guys have been in?
We've only been doing this for one year.
How long have you guys been in this?
What, no, we, one year? No, our committee was established, but we were not allowed to take the horns and do anything. We have done this in the past year. The city gave us an investment of twelve thousand five hundred dollars from accommodations tax money last year, and we more than tripled that in economic impact to this city, thirty-eight thousand and some odd dollars.
Would you like to see us find six people who want to do this, that want to put sixty thousand in their vehicles in their buildings where you see this? Is that what you need?
Yep.
If we can provide that, if we can provide that, are you, can you state that that's what we can get? This is something that you approve? If I can get that for you?
Definitely, I can see that, because I think-
You're saying that nobody's gonna do it and it's not gonna help, and you are right.
Is it the business owner that's gonna do it?
The business owner's gonna have, the business owner's not gonna be doing it. It's gonna be the owner of the property, of course. Business owners, business owners right now don't have the money. The people who are wanting downtown aren't looking to be at Radford Road or 301, because they can't afford that type of rent or lease money. The people in downtown represent us as a local community, and they're looking for a lease option to start them off. They can hardly, who are we? We're, we're not-
Hey, this building was up to date. Maybe they can get a thousand dollars rent.
Uh, downtown is a support of our, of our community. I mean, I get calls every day asking for downtown, because, one, they're taking pride in their business. You got cars riding back and forth all, but they got the, you know, if you see it-
My question is, though, the person that owned the building, are they in agreement?
I, I said, "If you need that, then let me find sense for you, because we're asking you for, for a hundred thousand." Right? And we're, how much, actually, the real answer to a hundred thousand, that's gonna be thirty-three for you. So, if I can't choose three, which I already have them, and we didn't come to you not doing our work, homework on it. We came to you already prepared.
Of course.
So, if I can provide that for you, are you, are you up for it? And like you said, roofs are so expensive. That's what we want it for. Because most grants, like the facade is just, when I go talk to people, they're like, "Man, Sarah, if I, I can go fix that awning over here with that, that's what's gonna, that was what facades are, but our whole building, I mean, nobody's gonna move into it, and the awning's gonna get old as it sits there." That's why we structured something that made sense. This is saying, "Hey, you need to put more in it, but guess what? If you put sixty thousand in, you're gonna get thirty thousand back, basically." So, you're only putting thirty thousand in it. Well, sixty thousand, we're hoping, would take in the big things, like the flooring, or the, or the roof on it. And yes, thirty thousand are some of them, but the highest one I've seen so far on the roof was twenty-seven, and it was paid through insurance at twenty-seven. Mostly, they're not gonna be at thirty thousand, and we need to talk about how big, how small. We're talking here. But, if you need us to prove it to you, we can do that. If that's what you need, we'll do it.
Yeah, that's a easy one. Let me speak to that. I, I actually walked into a building, I wanna say which one it is. Like I told y'all, it's the fourth building downtown right now. Thank God, in either of those storms, I didn't get a drop of water.
We didn't have Dillon building either, or down the whole road.
Which is amazing, because a lot does flood, you know, especially around First Avenue. Uh, we're not here talking about the sewer, although I agree with you, it needs to be done. Um, you know, just figure it, regardless, whether we have to laugh at that building or not, that, that needs to be done. Um, but, I walked into one building, looking to buy it, purchased it, we wanted twenty-five thousand for it, which honestly, I mean, it's a, it's a gut, you know, but he wanted twenty-five thousand for it. I was at eighteen, and he stuck at twenty-five, and I think somebody else was up there, and found that, which is great. But, so I took the contractor in there with me. We looked at everything, ceiling, roof, floor, you know, everything, told him the price. He said, "You probably look in there somewhere between seventy, eighty thousand, maybe ninety thousand, depending on what you wanna do." Now, I've done these, I've done them before already, gutted. The old bell jury, I had a guy that did across the floor, believe it or not, the floor's not that big, crossed seven times. I mean, we've done it from door to door. Um, and nowhere closer to that kinda money, because I don't have that kinda money. So, my contractor says seventy to eighty, ninety thousand. I said, "Okay, that's," so now I've got a hundred, a hundred fifteen in the building. It's gonna be tough for me at fifty-six to see any goodie out of that. By the time I paid for it, it'll probably be my grand tour. Yeah, guess they ran it and goes through it. But, if you give me a thirty thousand dollar mansion grant, and that sixty, seventy, eighty thousand now drops to thirty, forty thousand that I personally have in it, plus the building, what I paid for, now I've got about sixty thousand in. When in seven years, eight years, if I can keep it granted, it's paid for. And then, for me, is retirement money. That's, and I would've bought this building, I would've bought it at twenty-five. I'm always gonna make a love of it. That's just what you do in real estate, I think. I would've made it, but somebody else that on our committee is, is looking at that same building. I said, "You go for it, you're younger, you can get more out of it." So, I'm constantly looking at it, but two hundred thousand, when people tell me that, I'm like, "What in the world? Are you doing it for two?" I could build a building for two hundred, I could build a, a three thousand square foot home for two thousand dollars. Now, granted, it might not have all the bells and whistles. We're talking about fixing the roof, we're talking about making it look like this on your head. Which is, there's nothing wrong with this room, but I'm saying it's not fancy fancy. It's a basic room. And this is what we're talking about. You get it back to something like this, it's a rentable thing.
And that's all we're-
And if you stay on it, like I stay on my buildings, I clean my rent once a month. I walk the building to make sure there's not any leaks in the ceiling, because if it gives a drop, I take care of it then. Where it really is, the problem is, we got some bad building owners. I'll just be honest with you. We got some bad building owners. That's what it boils down to. So, here's what happened. Fifteen, twenty, thirty years ago, somebody gets a building, whether they get it impaireded or they buy a building, and then they don't do anything to it. The city lets it go on and on and on and on and on, they don't get fined. So, now it's really, I believe, the city, I'm gonna throw the county in there too, because the county's part of the city, or the city's part of the county. Um, it's, it's really, now, I think it's, the city's problem. Because, why would you let them go for fifteen years? If, if you had, you got children, I'm just, I'm really speaking to everybody, but I guess it's a good chance Molly's broke up. But, if you told your child, "Clean that room," and then you walked out, and you come back, "Clean that room." After about the third time, there's gonna be, something's gonna happen, right? That room's gonna get cleaned, or something else is gonna happen. Well, that should be the same way with a building owner. You live in a community. You can't just buy a building and let it fall down when your neighbors are three doors down. I actually, I should be able to sue you for the detriment of my business when you've got a building three, four doors down that looks like a third world country. I'm being honest about it. I'm just being honest, like, I've been, I've been doing this about ten years. And I have painted the backs out of my building, right through the alley, on the alley on Main Street, right through the back, you'll see, all the back of the buildings have been painted, which was used with facade money. I've used it five times and got half of my money back every single time.
Visit me on Saturday and look at my building. It's been through two floods. We flooded both times, but I, I've been-
I said, "I've seen them down on her building, and it looks great."
And I know the pain of tearing down a building too. It costs over fifty thousand dollars.
We appreciate Locking the Court. We don't want any building to be that way.
Yeah, exactly. We don't need any more tearing and walking through, and, you know, so we're just looking to rehab, honestly. We're, I think we're all on the same page. It's just, you know, we need, when I say we, I'm just speaking for the whole county, we need to invest in our downtown. Because here's the other thing, there, there are other grants out there, and we are sitting on them. But here's what happens. You go and buy a grant, you know what they want, they first thing on the note?
Yeah.
What you're sitting in the county got to invest in. They are, they got any skin in the game? I mean, you say, "Well, not so far." Then, it's hard to get that grant when you won't even buy it to your own city. That's just, I mean, I'm just being honest. I wouldn't give you money if you, if my child came to me and said, "They need forty dollars, but he's got five thousand dollars in the bank," I mean, no. You're kidding, I, you know, you ain't got any skin in the game. So, uh, that's our problem is right now, well, the biggest problem is, we got some bad building owners. That's just the truth of the matter, you know? If you don't give a crap about your building, you just ain't gonna give a crap, period.
But we're wanting to help them. We're wanting, we're not wanting to take it from them. We want to help them.
Or, fine them, just let them either sell.
They are currently winning fines. A lot of tickets went out last week.
It's going to have gone out. They started doing that. I don't really wanna find nobody. If the city don't either, we don't want that money. What we want, we want you to keep your property up. It's just like at your house. You want your neighbor to keep their, their yard up. This, this is just basic, you know, life. Keep your stuff up. And you want the people besides you to do the same thing. And my house can look great, but if my neighbors all around me look trashy, my house don't look great. Nobody's sitting on that. I'll just sit in the trash.
And like, I think Sarah has business people that want to just move into a building and rent it, contacting weekly. But we don't have, what, two buildings is what we have available currently?
Problem is, is that, if you don't like, if you got so much, if you bought the buildings and it's just been too much damage to it, why not sell it? Why not sell it, you know? Or, if you wanna, if you don't wanna sell it, then you need help with getting it fixed up. We're providing an outlet, not a little outlet. We're going to ask for a bigger to get you set up. You know, we're not asking you to set it up to whatever business is gonna go in there. They have to do that. But we're trying to not set up a business owner to fail. We're trying to let them make some money to lease it out if they want to, or start their own business in it.
We need every building fixed up, and they rented out. This is, this is how we handle it.
We brought this up to some people.
I know, I know. It's just information for us. We'd love to see the streets smaller and that stuff.
Bring a thing, sure, please, Sarah. She said, "Gotta go to bed now." I'm with you, bud.
Thank y'all. I know it's hard.
Thank y'all for your time.
Got it. You right side. That was safe and close to that lady. Actually, close the section down.
Have, have we, uh, gone anywhere? We had to go get up there?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we have not done anything with Mill Park yet. Structural engineer and the irings here, the Smith Gardner, met down there two weeks ago. So, they're gonna get a proposal back, and they, they feel confident they can come back and lease it to break things.
I got a question that we'll answer. They need seventy-fourth software, year one, seventeen thousand eight hundred eighty-seven, they need each year, thirteen thousand three hundred sixteen dollars.
Yeah, sure, we got that budget for twenty-four, I did that twenty-five, six hundred dollars. Uh, twenty-four, sixty, and, uh, personally, uh, basically what this will do is get us the software. We need to use the track and permit and that type of stuff.
That's right. Got a lot of paperwork out. We put us up by ISO, natural, part of natural resources.
Yeah, that's, helps us with partnering natural resources with actually being go online, go online.
That's right.
Deal permit, we actually get, uh, pay online, pay online and do stuff. We, we're basically what it do is get us up to, what we need to get to, uh, for, we think it's pay online now, do stuff. We do that. We also get, us also got GIS, also got GIS part of it, uh, which we can actually use GIS part of track, track, permit, that type of stuff. So, really, it'd be the main objective, be more efficient out of that office, and we're more efficient for it. But I did want, I did want to get counsel, obviously, to understand what we're doing, have any questions that we can ask.
I have one question. If, uh, if someone goes online and says, "Pay a permit," uh, is this gonna be like my nurses, you know, it's human nature to try to, or to pay money? Are y'all going to go out, once the permit is issued, or someone will go out the check to make sure the square footage and all is what they initially request?
Oh, yeah. That'd be my way for them to do that. We're just like them coming in the office, doing the same thing. And then we got to look at it, and I can't lie about it.
So, y'all, in other words, you can guarantee construction process, somebody would lay eyes on it, not just take somebody order.
Still have to do it in the state.
Just like a lot of states.
That's right.
There's no question.
K O L P, you said, "It's between eighty-"
K O L P, you said it's between eighty and one percent reimbursement by the state.
Mr. Chairman, I got, uh, I got Mr. Cray here, but we, we go, pretty much take it in on the next Wednesday's speech, but I did want to let you know that Mr. Mr. Senator Cray out working on, along with our finance person, Joey. And we feel like we could get eighty percent reimbursement on the sum. Eighty percent on the sum and a hundred percent.
Yeah, according to Dave Marks from the South Carolina Revenue Office in Columbia, we would get eighty percent on most of it, and some of it a hundred percent. So, uh.
And what, what Senator and I had talked about was?
We talked about it, and we sort of figured it out, pretty much close to about a hun, about four hundred fifty thousand. And then it was three hundred sixty thousand reimbursement. So that's about ninety thousand from the county. Now, I, I hear everybody else, how this stuff is tearing up. You can't outrun a piece of equipment twenty-four seven, seven days a week, ten years, without tearing it up. And this is something that we need in order for, we can do our service with EMS, sheriff office, all other purse squatting. And we need this equipment so we can do our better and put a better amount of the city for this county. So sit back, throw them on your tail, listen, it's gonna go down. And once it does, hey, we're gonna be sitting there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, good thing by the, uh, the dollar that we're paying, the financials are gonna match. We're gonna match. And we've already received, we've already got, we've already got, the dollars already generated, the money to make, to make the match. So it's not really, it's not gonna be.
Do you know what I think of the county?
They're over there, they're speaking. Next to the D C C O B in September this summer.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I got, being here with, uh, Spectrum, Charter Communications, if you could just pull a break. Break down, that was kind of a bit, we're likely to turn.
Absolutely. And, uh, Clay, I'll also talk about our broadband initiative as part of that. Uh, I have some handouts of the Jacob Knox, my associate, who used to work with the Association of Counties for about seven years. As an attorney, I worked for Spectrum. Good news is, we solved the broadband problem. Well, bad news is, we solved broadband efficiency during the COVID pandemic especially. I know your citizens are all, uh, really, when it comes to kids trying to get to broadband for school, telehealth, just doing basic functions nowadays. You've gotta have a fast connection to the internet. And, uh, we come with really, really good news from the county today. We're not asking for anything today. That's the first piece of good news. Uh, we, uh, we estimate there are probably about thirty-five hundred to forty-two hundred rooftops, houses in Dillon County that do not have access to broadband. When I say broadband, I'm referring to an always-on connection to the internet that is faster than twenty-five megabits per second, not an old dial-up connection or anything like that. Uh, Spectrum actually provides a two-hundred megabit connection, which is about eight to ten times as fast. Some of y'all might have our connection, but we actually won a grant from the federal government to provide, uh, thirty-six counties in South Carolina for the next six years, a hundred thousand rooftop with broadband. That is all on the backs of private investment from Spectrum and a federal subsidy. If, you'll see in your packet, um, kind of some overview, but if you look at this Dillon County, uh, slide right here, which I think is.
That'll be the left side of your packet.
Those blue shaded areas, uh, represent twenty-six hundred ninety-three rooftops in Dillon County. I'd like you to be a moment to get there, if y'all can see this slide here. It's on the back, yeah. Those, uh, you can see this is a shaded blue areas of the county. Those represent census blocks that Spectrum has invested in as part of this federal grant to build broadband to two thousand six hundred ninety-three rooftops. And we have six years to do it, but we've worked very closely with Representative Jackie Hayes. And out of the thirty-six counties in South Carolina, I've worked with him, Dillon is one of the first three counties we're gonna do. So we're gonna be building this broadband network into Dillon County in 2022. We'll start and we'll finish in 2023. That represents a good portion of your unserved households in Dillon County at no additional cost to the county. That is charter, Spectrum investment, along with a federal subsidy match that we got out of the SEC program. We are proud and pleased to be here in Dillon County. For those of you that have our service, we are the premier broadband provider in South Carolina. And we're gonna, we're gonna put our mark not only on the densely populated areas downtown Dillon where we already are, but these census blocks have less than ten homes per mile. In some cases, they're less than five homes per mile. We had to bid on the census blocks, whereas part of this program that were entirely uncertain, meaning they did not have one household in the entire county that had access to broadband internet. So this was a, an interesting program, and Charter stepped up to the plate. Our CEO stepped up to the plate nationally to connect rural areas. Uh, so we're gonna be doing that now. That doesn't get the last thousand or fifteen hundred homes. We're doing a study now. We will have access to that study. We'll come back to this council and actually share with you the rooftops that are left and offer up some options for you all with the ARP money if you like, or with the ARP money that's coming to the state. We'll work with Coach Hayes and Senator Kent Williams to possibly do a joint application at the state level. They're gonna be providing some state grant money for counties to do, complete the broadband build-out. Dillon County is gonna be ahead of the other forty-six counties of South Carolina. Uh, the other ones, we have six years to do, but Dillon County is, along with Florence County, who has worked with us, actually with some ARP money to do, finish out the county, and Darlington County. This region, PD, is where we're coming first, and we're proud, proud to announce that today. As a part of that, uh, we are doing with Clay, working with, uh, this event on September thirtieth, right here in Dillon County. I have Aaron Fong, who's the Vice President of Institutional Development for Northeastern Technical College. We already have a program with them where we're connecting their, uh, technical college students to the internet. We already had a program going on. In partnership with Northeastern Technical College, you are all invited. Please invite the county out. I don't know if this is gonna be on the hometown eight, but everybody, we'd like to come out. We'll be providing maps of the census blocks, showing folks where we're gonna be building the broadband, because I know y'all probably hear from your citizens a lot about the broadband. We'll be providing maps, and we'll be having lunch. Invite you to come join us for a lunch, uh, from MacArthur Farms at ten-thirty. At eleven o'clock, I'll be moderating, or I'll be a part of a rural tech talk roundtable program, along with Dr. Paul Wagner from Northeast Technical College, along with Representative Jackie Hayes, he'll be on that roundtable. Senator Kent Williams will be on that roundtable as well. Clay will be on that roundtable as well. And we'll be talking about the broadband needs of the county that day. And then Aaron, I don't know if you wanted to talk about what we're doing that afternoon, uh, after the roundtable on broadband.
Good evening. Um, and I have some flyers that I'll leave as well. Um, but as part of this, um, from one till seven P M., we're gonna have a hiring event, um, at our Dillon campus. Um, so we'll have the roundtable that morning, and then we'll transition, um, to the hiring event. And on the back, it's basically a community festival. Um, so we're asking, um, anybody bring their resume.
Proceed to the root.
There's the list of all the companies on here. We're over ten right now that'll be there. Um, we'll have information about our programs at Northeastern Tech, and then we'll have, um, a face painter. There's employables, the food trucks. Um, so we're kinda trying to have something for everybody. So if the family can come, if somebody's looking for a job, they can go do that, while the kids, you know, can be entertained. So, um, again, lots of great information. And also just wanted to put one more plug in, um, that all of our students, um, since COVID, when we got, um, you know, kinda shut down and had to move more online with our education, um, any student that's enrolled, um, at any TC, um, depending on where they live, um, receives, we have learner laptops and internet in their home. Um, so great partnership with Spectrum, and, um, it's just been great feedback, um, allowing, you know, reducing the barriers for everybody to go to school. So we'll leave, um, I'll leave a stack of these. Feel free to pass them out to your family and friends. Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions on the broadband program, Clay.
Say, start twenty-two first, anywhere.
It's, uh, right now, our engineer has told me it's slated for the first quarter of twenty-twenty-two, yes, sir. Uh, to build out, I can't remember how many miles of fiber it's gonna take, but it's over a hundred miles of fiber, maybe in the hundreds, to build out to those twenty-seven hundred rooftops that I mentioned to you. So that, they're gonna need to get started in Q one twenty-twenty-two in order to finish by the end of twenty-twenty-three. So there is, there is, broadband is on the way for a good portion of the uncertain portion of the county that's part of the program. And again, I will be coming back to the county, if y'all have to hear, to talk about the study that we do for the other thousand or so houses that aren't part of this program, that we could be getting to part of the federal subsidy. Those are gonna be fairly expensive to get to, you know, per house, and we're happy to put in more money, but we may ask for some either subsidies from the county or partnership, certainly asking for a grant from the state. State, and that right now is gonna have two to four hundred thirty dollars of marketing money. And they are, all the state legislators are allocating two to four hundred million for broadband program at state level. They, they, we would have to demonstrate a strong local partnership with the county in order to have a good chance of that.
Got one question.
Yes, sir.
Um, all this is gonna be used through fiber.
Yes, sir.
If that ain't conjunction with, I mean, that's a crazy question. I mean, you're getting the internet through fiber, the cable, the label through the fiber.
That's an excellent question. Uh, that you were asking about the technology in terms of you guys having an update and upgrade and all the investments you made. This will all be fiber to the premises. That's a twenty-five year technology that we're not gonna have. We're not gonna have to upgrade. Fiber is the gold standard for internet. But it will not be the traditional television that you're used to with our Spectrum service. They'll use the app. So this is really building a system that is for the broadband. Most people are going to a, um, streaming Netflix-type app for their television now. We have one as well. So they will not have a traditional cable box for Spectrum. They will have the ability to get our streaming app, and we will be able to provide our streaming services for what it costs, but it won't be through a traditional cable box. Yes, sir. But the broadband seems to be the most important thing that we're trying to do.
Sure appreciate what y'all doing, and we, I know we're gonna have everybody, and we're gonna build up some money. We're looking to have Jackie Hayes represent us in Columbia, though. He's on the Ways and Means Committee, and they, they got a little money on that.
He's been an incredible partner, and he's the reason that we're going to Dillon first. He has helped us out a ton and, uh, really, really been a great partner and told, he's been telling us how much of a priority this is for years. And so we weren't gonna, we weren't gonna let this pass us by.
Sure appreciate what you're doing, and the people doing kind of something they need.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Dillon County Airport update.
Mr. Chairman, I want to give you a quick update. We did meet with the, uh, engineers, uh, just a few little bit, fire blast. So, that team got some update on that. Uh, we did talk with USDA. We've got about four USDA grants, and plus we got a hundred eight thousand we got from the state, a hundred eight thousand we got from the state. We are looking at, um, I'm gonna meet with the building committee, which Chris is the chairman. Uh, I'll probably call the building committee meeting in the next couple of weeks, and we'll sit down with a consultant engineer. Uh, they are looking at the road that's going in, looking at moving the airport and putting, uh, airport terminal building and stuff on the other side, probably getting more, uh, and looking at the back seats, as I said, that's what we gave you update. It's a full, I suspect, Chris is the committee, and that's what we meet probably next, uh, couple of weeks or so. Exactly how that's gonna be laid out.
Question, that's my airport. Seventeen C, Hong Kong, thirty-four, nine five, Hong Kong, flight.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I want to give you a quick update. I'll meet with Sackeline D O T tomorrow with Alliance Consulting. Uh, they hired that truck in, we hired there to draft up the plans for the widening of Highway thirty-four ninety-five. Um, what I always say, everybody here, the old stuff is out there, is out there, so it's gonna be, we're looking at four lane there, where, uh, where that part is, all the way back to a little bit before you turn off the road to get back to four. Uh, doing that part there. We'll meet with Sackeline D O T tomorrow. Um, they didn't make a comment earlier, that the D O T was already gonna surf, uh, resurface from thirty-four, on this side of thirty-four, back into the city of Dillon. We're gonna work with them, we'll see what we can do. Hopefully, they could possibly get that ready, maybe extend it down Long Street to the four lane. But the four lane is already been, I'm happy to say, we got the two point five million dollar grant, we're gonna apply for. Three hundred thousand dollar site enhancement grant, both those through Sackeline Park of Commerce. Uh, we got some money through, through P D cog, we got some money through Harbor Freight Tools. Uh, we got about money through Equus and Quick Trips. Uh, Quick Trips is waiting on us to finalize the plans. There's gonna be a traffic light that they're at, the road that's running beside Equus building now. There's gonna be a new road in there, we're gonna improve the road that goes in by Equus. We're gonna build a new connector road back over Harbor Freight, redo the road around. Uh, if some of y'all are on council before, uh, if you all are on council before, the road originally came into Harbor Freight where the employee interest had made loop, made turn, loop like this coming in. Uh, Sandy Wafer and I and P D cog, uh, not like that aspect because of, you know, the limit does to produce, cannot belt out to you for the future. So we went back in there and asked Harbor Freight, you know, they worked with Atlanta, worked with the state. So now the road's actually gonna go straight. It's gonna be a T, we'll call it a T there. The other road's gonna come back into Harbor Freight. So we were able to work that out. Uh, grants are okay with that, that change there. So, uh, just wanted to give you a heads up that this project's about a six billion dollar project. We've got all of it funded. Um, we're hoping to get the engineering done, especially on this part here. I'm just, I hope the engineering be done by this year, by the end of the year. And we should have all the permits together. In fact, we'll meet tomorrow with D O T, we'll know their impact. Uh, we're hoping to start construction late spring, early summer of next year. So there's gonna be some impact of traffic out there. Just want to give you heads up. And the D O T's making us go through a number of different hoops to, uh, to, to assure traffic flow. But I mean, I, I just want to make sure council, everybody understands, there's gonna be some traffic issues as they, as they resurface. Four lane resurf, four lane that section in there, and at that time, we're dealing with, uh, the traffic flow issue. This is a major impact to Harbor Freight Tools, major impact to the county, and we're out excited to finally get this project started this spring. And, uh, it will be a, it will be a nice, nice issue what we're trying to do out here in Columbia.
Can you talk one time about trying to reinforce that bridge?
Yes, yes, I'm glad you brought it up too. You said that that bridge is gonna have to be addressed. You know, the problems when she come off the third floor and break. We're gonna work with Sackeline D O T. We, we, we get in conversations with them, or the council, that we've got. Yeah, give them a regional plan. So if we're able to get this project on a regional plan, we're gonna get the bridge work done. We're gonna try to put that on a regional plan, add a bridge. So I think that, uh, um, there is a possibility, just, just, there is a small possibility right now. Uh, there's six counties in the P D cog region, which included us, Marburg, Darlington, Florence, Chesterfield. All the county administration have been meeting for the last two weeks, and we're applying for about a fifty to a hundred million dollar grant to address that, this initial, but we're, the other side of the bridge is going back for Harbor Freight. Because I think at the end of the day, uh, we need to get both sides. Y'all, we're also working for them, so, uh, as my understanding, it's working on, working with, we's incredible. Doc, hopefully we can get that submitted, and hopefully by the middle of the year in October, there's about a eighty, I think we're talking about seventy-five to a hundred million dollar budget. And I'll be, the six county bridges, our, our part, about the, the, the. We are planning ahead. We, we, this is a major plus for us, and I think it, it, I can relate to what you're saying. I think this is gonna help us to, 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 to reiterate why we need the bridge, four lane, why we got, why we need, why.
Check what you've been doing. I want you to know this will be a major, major good thing for Dillon County. This will bring up the intersection. We've got to have the road, so it's, 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 it's.
No question. By that, the, the Port Authority has come to us, and they, and everybody's come to us and realized that it's important that we address the traffic issue today, because as you know, if, if something already been built out there like Quick Trips, and you ask them, say, oh, guess what? We want to move, once you move your pump back ten foot, your building back ten foot, that would be almost possible. So that was gonna be, so I'm excited that the project owners out there are willing to work with us, and this will really get us a long way down the road of having this project done before we're.
Get the road, we're gonna get take Quick Trip.
No question. But Quick Trips is waiting on us to see where we're at. We've been in constant contact with them, uh, really for the past few. in constant contact with them, uh, really for the past year, and they have been a true business ally of us, working with them.
Fifty-nine, yeah, fifteen county committee, public safety, you know, they have
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the Public Safety Committee met, uh, the other day, and, uh, we've had money and met with fire departments and some other, some other public safety information, and I think that, uh,